From the March 22nd, 2021 meeting of the Rutherford County Regional Planning Commission. If you would stand with us, please Commissioner Lee Bogle will listen to our prayer and our pledge. Lee?
Bow with me, please. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this time that you've allowed us to come together. We thank you for the opportunity to be here to conduct the business of the county. Heavenly Father, we thank you so much for this springtime and this renewed newness of life again and to see things coming back from winter dormancy. And we thank you, dear Lord, that the vaccine is becoming more widely available and that we can get back to some sort of normalcy in life and get back to friendships and relationships. Heavenly Father, we ask that you watch over the proceedings here today. We ask that you continue to watch over leaders of our country, our state, and our county and help them to make the best decisions for all and the majority. Heavenly Father, we ask you to continue to watch over our emergency services, our military, and all those that take care of us and keep us safe. In your son's Jesus' name, amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. This meeting of the Rutherford County Regional Planning Commission is being conducted pursuant to Bill Lee's Executive Order 16, Governor Bill Lee. I would ask for a motion, conducting this meeting electronically is necessary to protect the public health, safety, and welfare in light of the coronavirus.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. Your response, commissioners, will also serve as our roll call. Gail?
Charlotte P.
Yes.
Chip Pinion.
Yes.
Craig Lynch.
Yes.
David Jones.
Yes.
Jim Everwater.
Yes.
Lee Bogle.
Yes.
Marvin Whitworth.
Yes.
Mike Kush.
Yes.
Pettis Reed.
Yes.
Rhonda Allen.
Yes.
Jeff Phillips.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Gail.
And we have a quorum.
Thank you. This time, we need to approve minutes for our December 14th meeting and our February 8th meeting. I'll call on our Vice Chair Pettis Reed.
Mr. Chairman, I have read over both sets of these minutes. I find no problems. I move that they be approved.
We have a motion and a second to approve our February and December meeting minutes. Call or roll, please, Gail.
Charlotte P.
Yes.
Chip. I'll check again. Is Chip Pinion there? Craig Lynch? David Jones?
Yes.
Jim Everwater?
Yes.
Lee Bogle?
Yes.
Marvin Whitworth?
Yes.
Mike Kush?
Yes.
Pettis Reed?
Yes.
Rhonda Allen?
Yes.
Jeff Phillips?
Yes.
Motion carries.
We have one item that's been withdrawn. Item 6C1, item number 21-2011, Powell's Chapel, Hollingshead subdivision. That item has been withdrawn. Excuse me. Getting into our business, item 6A, we have one waiver request, 6A1. The item is 21-4003, Jason Cleve for K&amp;B Investment Partners requesting a waiver to allow an off-site se slightment for property located at 3520 West Jefferson Pike. Tax map is 25. Doug?
Yes, sir. Thank you, and good morning, everyone. This first waiver request that we have, as you stated, is for property located along West Jefferson Pike. The existing property is about an acre and a half in size. There are a couple of diagrams I put in your agenda packets to kind of show you what the applicant is proposing to do. You'll see there are two existing residential structures on the property. The applicant's proposing to split it into three parcels. Lot 1 would contain the existing house. Lot 2 would be for new construction. Lot 3 would contain the existing mobile structure located toward the back of the property. The waiver that the applicant is requesting is in order to allow the existing structure on Lot 1 to have an easement to their septic site, which would be located on Lot 3. Of course, if this waiver is approved, this will give the applicant the ability to go talk with a surveyor and possibly do the subdivision. Of course, they'll have to make sure that it meets all of our regulations as far as that goes. But the plat would also have to come back before you just because there is a waiver involved and the fact that it's three lots. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions about this.
Any questions for the staff?
Well, provided he can meet the rest of the regulations, I mean, he'll still have to prove that he's got enough septic for the existing structures and for the new structure as well. So as long as he can prove all that, I mean, it'd just be a matter of making sure the easement's shown on the plat.
Have a motion to approve?
Yes.
And a second. Thank you. Once again, motion and a second to approve waiver request 21-4003 for Jason Cleve. Any other questions or comments? Call or roll, please, Gail.
Charlotte P.
Yes.
Craig Lynch?
Yes.
David Jones?
Yes.
David Jones?
Yes.
Jim Everwater?
Yes.
Lee Bogle?
Yes.
Marvin Whitworth?
Yes.
Mike Kush?
Yes.
Pettis Reed?
Yes.
Rhonda Allen?
Yes.
David Jones?
Yes.
Jeff Phillips?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Before we get into other business, I'd like to say I'm sure that several of you received supposedly message from me last week asking for money because I was in trouble. I may have been in trouble, but it wasn't me. It was one of those scam things. And if you sent me money, I'll return it to you. But the only one I've got money from is from Jim Everwater, and it was for 10,000 bucks, and he's not getting that back. Once again, this was the same thing that happened last year. And I appreciate you guys letting me know that that was coming out. I have no idea where that comes from, but it appears that it went to most of our planning commissioners. Okay, item 6B. These are items submitted for a preliminary plan approval. 6B1, item number is 20-1011, Hudson Meadows, 110 lots on 129-plus acres on RL located along Givens Road. Milton Investors Group LLC is the applicant. The tax map is 66. Doug?
Yes, sir. Thank you. This property, as you stated, is located along the west side of Givens Road, south of Herschel-Hudson Road. The property is zoned RL residential low density, but does have adequate water for fire hydrants and will be served by a step system for sanitary disposal. For these reasons, the property does qualify for the RL zoning bonus, which is within our zoning ordinance. Staff's primary concern, however, about this subdivision from the beginning, since we started talking with the applicant about this, has been the condition of Givens Road, especially to the north of the subject property. There is a large stretch of Givens Road that's less than 12 feet wide for several thousand feet and also has vertical and horizontal alignment challenges. We did receive a traffic study from the applicant. We don't think that the study really adequately accounted for the issues specifically with Givens Road. I'll let Mike speak a little more to that. Mike, if you could bring up those pictures of Givens Road in that one area.
Actually, they should have put it up here.
I'm going to show some pictures here. There should be another file. This is a portion of Givens Road, and we can show you about where that is on the map just to kind of show you what it looks like. Now, this is like an aerial shot. I think they had their drone up there looking at there. There's a series of. Now, this is not on your iPads. This was something that we put on there. As you, like I said, what you're looking at basically is one lane of travel. You know, if you meet any kind of a car, a larger vehicle, whatever, one of you is going to have to get off the road as you're looking at this. Now, when you look at Givens Road and the development patterns in that area, what you typically are seeing are predominantly larger lot acreage tracks. I don't think there's anything less than 2 to 3 acres along that whole stretch of Givens Road from overall all the way down to, or up, I should say, to Highway 96. Our subdivision regulations have a lot of different guidelines and regulations and things in them. But under our, just our general applicability area, our purpose at the beginning of the regulations, there is discussion in there regarding the harmonious development of the region and its environs for the coordination of roads within the subdivided land with other existing or planned roads within the state or regional plan, et cetera, et cetera. But it also discusses for the conservation of or production of adequate transportation, water, drainage, and sanitary facilities. Again, water and sanitary disposal in this particular development isn't so much the issue. Really has more to do with the transportation network. We also see for the avoidance of population congestion and for the avoidance of such scattered or premature subdivision of land, as would involve danger or injury to health, safety, or prosperity. Now, this language comes directly out of the state code, TCA, but we've referenced that language in our subdivisions regulations as well. But like I said, our primary concern with this from the beginning has been that condition of Givens Road. And Mike, I'll let you talk a little bit more specifically about the traffic study and any other possible issues you might have with the drainage or anything.
Okay. Thank you, Douglas. Like any development of this size, we ask for a traffic study to evaluate the existing road network, the traffic patterns of the existing road network, projected growth of the road network, and then how this development, once it's built out, will impact the existing road network. So early on, when we had our pre-application meeting, we discussed this with the design team and said, hey, this Givens Road is a one-lane road, and it is extremely narrow and curvy, and it has vertical and horizontal challenges north of the site. And the traffic study came back, and I really liked the traffic engineer that they used. However, they say that the road is 16 feet wide, and that's not an accurate statement for Givens Road. It might be 16 feet wide right at the entrance, but you travel a little bit farther north, and it narrows down to one lane. And kind of like what Doug showed you on the image of the fire truck, when I was out there looking at it, a tractor with a haze spear was coming over the hill as I was going up the hill. So it was quite exhilarating to see that big spear coming towards me. So that is our concern, is safety of the motoring public, of the new residents out there, of the existing residents with the additional traffic on this road. Right now, it doesn't have much traffic. You can see large parcels a little bit north of the site, just a few where it's been tracked off into many farms or many estates or whatever. But with this, you know, we have, Doug mentioned the planning, excuse me, the subdivision regulations, but we also have minimum design standards that we have to adhere to. And these design standards, they take in consideration of all Tennessee state law, the zoning ordinance, the long-range transportation plan, and other regulations and rules adopted by other boards and commissions. So looking at this, though, if this were, and I'm just trying to simplify it, if there were only like a 1 or 2-inch diameter water line on Givens Road, we wouldn't be having this conversation. There's not enough capacity in the current configuration of Givens Road for the additional traffic. And we just think that this subdivision is a little premature to be constructed at this time with the existing condition of Givens Road. So that's essentially our concerns, is traffic safety, the additional traffic on here. If you look where these kids will be going to school, they'll be going to Last Castas Elementary School. And I can kind of show you where that is on the map. I'll zoom out a little bit. So here, if you can see my cursor on the screen, there is the proposed development. So you got to figure, a lot of people are going to travel north on Givens Road to get to Last Castas Pike, to get to the elementary school up here, and you see the little school building. Other people can travel a different route, but that's the most direct route to get to a major arterial Last Castas Pike to get to the school. Otherwise, twisty-turny to get up to the school. And so we figure that a lot, and even the traffic study states it, that they're assuming that half of their traffic is going to go north on Givens Road, half will go south. So that's our major concern. It's just that the lack of the infrastructure in the area is the issue we have with this development and where it is in this section of the road, the road network. Yes, sir.
Anything else? Commissioners, any questions?
Chairman, I have a question. Mike, go back a couple of minutes. You said something that I didn't quite comprehend the whole part. I thought you said something about a 2-inch water line?
If this were, was a 2-inch, there's an 8-inch water line on Givens Road. It's, I assume it's a connector water line for, between zones. But I'm saying if this were, if Givens Road were a water line, it would be like a 2-inch water line. It just doesn't have the capacity for what they're wanting to do.
What's the distance from the entrance of the proposed development to Last Castas Pike?
It is, I think, I was thinking it was a mile and a half or more. Yeah. Or over 2 miles, over 2 miles.
And that's as the truck drives, too. That wasn't as the crow flies, but yeah.
That's a quick evaluation.
Other questions? Pettis?
And we are looking at one way in, one way out?
Yes, sir. Now, there's nothing in our subdivision regulations that addresses that issue specifically, and they are showing stub outs, which is something that we do encourage for these type developments. But this property has limited frontage, so realistically, they can only get one entrance into the property. I mean, that is a concern we have as well. But again, that's, there's nothing in our rig specifically that talks about a minimum number of entrances into a piece of property.
We just go back to the South Ridge tornado back in the late 90s when that main road in, the only road in to that subdivision was blocked, and emergency services couldn't go in. So we try to get as many entrances as we can to access the property.
And you're talking about 110?
It's total lots is, I think, 110. I think residential's closer to 100, if I remember right.
Right. It's like 106 or something.
Yeah.
This is the site itself, and the road would connect about where this barn is. And you can see a little bit, you know, there's two lanes, but it's very narrow right there. If it's 16 feet, it's lucky, it's 16 feet right there. I measured a few spots around. Let me zoom back in, and I'll show you. And I have to turn address points on because I measured at the mailboxes. So just south of the site was 17 and 1/2 feet at mailbox at 4653 Givens Road. Just north of the site, just north of the fence, it's 14 feet wide. A little bit farther north, there's a mailbox at 4970. Right here, it's 13 and 1/2 feet wide. And then you go around the corner, right here at the corner, it's one lane, less than 12 feet wide. And it's that way for quite a while till you get to 15, excuse me, 5901, which is somewhere, let's see, right there. 5901, right here. So it starts to widen back out to 14 feet right there. But this long section is one lane. And I can kind of show you what I'm talking about. This is Google Street View. So there's where the driveway will be. And like I said, these, this section is substandard, too. I mean, it's typically, we want 2 10-foot lanes, 2 4-foot shoulders, and ditches on either side. So you go a little bit farther north where it next down. And it's, you know, a one-lane road. Beautiful countryside out there, but you turn around and look, that's a pretty steep, that's one of the hills we're worried about right there. And you can kind of see in that fire truck video or the photograph, it comes around a curve, a horizontal curve, and then a vertical curve comes down the hill. So that's, this is one area that we're very concerned about.
Mike, the question I ask, you've got, say, 100 lots in there, 2 vehicles coming out of there in the morning, or a school bus that's going in there and picked up children.
Yes, sir.
It's coming out. It turns up Givens Road, headed back towards 96, and a fire engine is coming in, and they meet.
Yes, sir. Somebody's going to have to get off the road.
Somebody's going to have to yield and get off onto an open field.
Yes, sir.
Neither one of them can get out of that open field if there's moisture in that field.
Exactly.
That's the question I have there. So you have to either go back south through the curvy area, getting, I know that, I know that direction, trying to get back to Brown's Mill Road.
Mm-hmm.
Mr. Chairman, this is Commissioner Allen. I have a question.
Yes, Rhonda.
Thank you. Doug, when we were updating our subdivision regulations some time ago, it seems like, I remember, we tried to define what a road width should be. Because I remember one of Will Jarvie's favorite descriptors was when we're building houses on pig paths. And when something's 12 feet wide, that feels like what we're doing. So for some reason, I have 18 feet stuck in my head.
I think that's, and I remember what you were talking about. Of course, that was, golly, probably close to over 10 years ago at this point. Now, but I remember that. And I think the, kind of what they came up with now, at that time, like you said, was 18 feet. Now, our subdivision regulations do call out 2 10, what did you say, Mike, 2 10-foot lanes?
10-foot lanes.
Right. And then 2 4-foot shoulders. 4-foot shoulders. So basically, you've got 20 feet for the travel lanes and then the shoulders on either side. So it's been changed even since that point. But you were correct. I believe that's what came out of that original conversation, was 18 feet.
Okay. So then my follow-up question really is, why are we seeing this? Because I can't imagine a scenario where we would allow any development minus a single home on another road that's 12 feet wide. Why was this not just rejected outright?
Whenever we see an application, of course, they have a right to be heard before the commission, even if we've sat and told them, these are our concerns. You know, we can't just not place it on the agenda. There are statutory requirements in TCA that say if you do receive a plan, it has to be acted on within so much, so many days. This was actually originally submitted last year, and after discussions, of course, we told them we wanted to see a traffic study. They agreed to perform the traffic study. We just got that, I guess, about, well, we got this the same time we got this plan, didn't we? We got this about the same time.
Since February 2021.
Right. Yeah. So they submitted the traffic study along with the revised plan. So they want to move, try to move forward with it. Now, again, that's what this whole discussion is about that we're having today, you know, does it meet our minimum requirements or not? So, but that's, I mean, that's essentially why, is because, like I said, there are statutory requirements in TCA that say you do have to bring a plan unless the applicant says, no, we'll hold off on it.
Okay. So, and I didn't mean for that to sound like I'm fussing at you, because I'm really not fussing at you. After I heard myself say it, I'm like, you're using your mama voice. And I didn't mean to do that, so I'm sorry.
I'm used to it. It's okay.
Okay. So the other thing is, and I guess we'll hear from the applicant here in a second, have they made any gesture that they're going to improve that road? Because I know those have been conversations we've had in the past, where when a developer is willing to improve the infrastructure. And I'm not talking about just the part of the road that touches his property, but I'm talking about the to and from to make that a safe road. Has there been any conversation, if they're willing to do that?
I'll let them speak a little more to that. I do think they are proposing some improvements along the area in front of their lot, as far as how they access the subdivision. And Mike, correct me if I'm wrong.
That's you.
But as far as anything, actually, along Givens Road, further up in that area of concern, no, they're not proposing anything up there.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Doug indicated that the applicant is available and would, I think, be wanting to make a statement. Of course, this is not a public hearing, and this is not normal procedures for us, but if you'd like to hear from the applicant, I'll entertain that if anyone wants to suspend the rules to do that. We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules, so without objection. Call or roll, please, Gail.
Yes.
Chip Pinion?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I keep doing that. Craig Lynch?
Yes.
David Jones?
Yes.
Jim Everwater?
Yes.
Lee Bogle?
Yes.
Marvin Whitworth?
Yes.
Mike Kush?
Yes.
Pettis Reed?
Yes.
Rhonda Allen?
Yes.
Jeff Phillips?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Is the applicant available or a representative from the applicant? I'm going to warn you guys, I'm not giving you much time, okay? You've got 4 to 5 minutes.
Got you, got you.
Because since we've suspended the rules, I understand there's folks that are here that's wanting to speak, and I'll not lose control of this, okay?
Got you. Be quick.
I'm Jamie Reed with SCC. I'd like to kind of go over it real quick in the short time we have. The plans that you're looking at up there, we, just like Mike and Doug said, meet the water flow, the sewer flow. It's zoned RL. We're not asking to do any small lots. We're asking for actually the bigger lots. So it's 103 lots in that one area. Our roadway frontage is roughly 300 feet. Everything to the south of that site, currently, what I went out there and measured is, except what Mike said in front of the site, is 20 feet plus or greater in stride. And as you see from the maps above that they showed, it's a two-lane striped road in front of the site. What we're proposing is part of what the traffic study said that they asked us to provide, which is, basically says it's a level service A now, after development, it's a level service A. It's not generating, there's no traffic out there. We're not generating much traffic with 103 lots. Currently, they have school buses, that everybody's worried about buses and stuff traveling there. Their kids are now currently going down that road, going to that school, the one-lane road. So it's existing, that's what they're doing now. So I just want to let you know that, of course, if you've got any questions as far as the traffic, we did exactly what they said. Yes, we want to improve what's in front of our site like we normally do, but it's zoned RL. We're doing what it's zoned. We're not asking for another zoning, and we meet, you know, the water and sewer demand. know, the water and sewer demand, so. George, do you have any questions, comments, real quick for?
Yep, let me just make two, two quick comments. My name's George Dean, I'm a land use planning attorney from Nashville, represent many developers and property owners, and for that matter, neighborhood groups and these kinds of cases. Just, just two things that I'd like to point out. First, from what I've heard, the developer here, the applicant, meets the requirements of the subdivision regulations. I understand that the, the concern about the north side of Givens Road, but as Jamie just said, the traffic impact study demonstrates that the level of service will not decrease at all, probably because there's not much traffic out there anyway. You've already got the school buses, again, as Jamie indicated, going back and forth, as well as other public vehicles going up and down that highway. If it's so substandard, then surely the county would do something about it if that was the real problem. That can't be the, the big problem here. Let me also add that when you've zoned something, a particular zoning district, that implies that the, the adequacy of the structure that's already there is sufficient to meet what the zoning allows. The zoning allows this residential use of the land, the fact that it's zoned RL implies that the infrastructure out there is adequate to, to the use of the land. And again, you've got a traffic study that actually demonstrates, in the case of this particular development, that it is adequate to meet the needs of the development. I'll make one other final point, Doug, and by the way, I know Doug Demossi and his staff, they do a great job, have great respect for them. Harmonious development that Doug mentioned, there's a recent case from the Tennessee Court of Appeals talking about harmonious development. Harmonious development is what your subdivision regulations say they are. If you comply with the sub regs, then the courts say it's harmonious. We do comply with the subdivision regulations here. Thanks very much.
Is there any quick question? Any questions for the applicant?
So you're saying you're not willing to make improvements to Givens Road to Last Cassis Pike?
Well, we, we talked about doing what's in front of our site. Now, when you're talking about going to the north there, you, you open up a whole can of worms right away, is that all the deeds, now, I would bet, go to bet, that a lot of those deeds go to the center line of the road, where it's more than likely, probably not a county road, it's probably got a prescriptive right away, which is just to the edge of the pavements. So that's probably why they haven't widened them over time. So to answer your question, even if we probably wanted to, somebody would have to go through there and get it right away.
Well, I beg to differ that a hundred and six lots and homes are not gonna make a traffic difference on that road going to the school.
Well, they're not, they're not gonna change the level of service, yes, and I didn't say they would change the, the difference, but there's not any, hardly any traffic there now, and you're only adding a hundred, fifty's going south, fifty percent's typically gonna go north. I didn't do the traffic report, so I'm letting you know what she, they, we paid a traffic engineer to come up with the report, she come up with that data, that's what the county required, that's what we're, that's, I mean.
That's, that's what I was kind of talking about. I have the utmost respect for their traffic engineer, but.
I do too.
A single-lane road cannot be level of service A for two-way traffic. There's no way, no way.
Well, the, the current counts that she did show that, and there's traffic going on that one-way road, two ways. If you go out there, put your cameras up, there's traffic going both ways on that road, and it's a level of service A.
Well, study or no study, common sense would tell you, a one-traffic road is not going to be sufficient for this development.
Yeah, that's why we pay the traffic engineers all the time, I was gonna say, I didn't do the report, so. Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, I got a question. Morgan Whitworth. This is an off-the-wall question, which most of mine are. Sir, would you live on that road and be comfortable traveling out of there every morning with a hundred and nine of your current neighbors, and/or would you let your sixteen, seventeen-year-old child drive out there every morning and every afternoon to go to Oakland High School?
What'd she say? Would I be comfortable?
Would you be comfortable living out there?
Yeah, I would be, yeah, I mean, because I know they're not gonna be traveling, and where I live, fifty and sixty mile an hour, on a thirty mile an hour road, is typically, you see traffic traveling slower on roads that are narrow, based on traffic studies. I mean, Lee, anybody can tell you that when you give them wider roads and top shoulders and stuff, they go a lot faster. Typically, those rural roads, narrow type roads, they know the area and they typically drive slower.
Well, I would, and I understand what Jamie is saying, from a, from a, from a, just a general speaking standpoint, now, there's a difference between traffic calming and only having one lane of traffic, but I understand where he's going with it, but I, I don't think it's quite apples-to-apples comparison.
So the roads headed south to overall road are all meet county requirements?
Yeah, they're.
It's still.
Marginal, but it would do.
It's very, well, like I said, below the site, seventeen and a half feet wide.
In front of the site, everything I measured south of the site, to it, as you saw there, was well striped, like, it didn't have, like, I don't know if all of them had the shoulders like Mike's talking about, but they had the road pavement widths are twenty-something feet plus. That's what I'm saying, to get to the site from the south, you know, and overall, it's, and all the intersections associated with left turn movements, all that are level of service A, they're good level of services.
Not, not at Last Cassis, you, you go below that, well below that.
B, is it a B? Yeah.
No, 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 it's just like DNF.
On existing?
Thank you, Jamie.
Okay.
DNF, yeah. So you gotta turn kind of sideways when another vehicle's coming the other way, so, but it's, it is wider, but it's.
Well, if, if it's appropriate, or we have more speakers, or can we, are we allowed to talk through it yet, or are we waiting?
I'm sorry, Lee, say that again.
Are we allowed to talk through it yet, or are we still waiting on other people to present?
Did you have more questions for the applicant?
Well, I have an idea and a suggestion, just wanted to throw out.
Jamie, come back up, please.
I'm just thinking through some things here, and this is just an off-the-wall idea.
Yes, sir.
The current traffic from Last Cassis Pike to the last parcel before that subdivision, there are already currently two-way traffic on a single-lane road.
Right.
How far is it from the proposed subdivision entrance to that first parcel, or that is, I guess what I'm saying is, what if we put one-way traffic on that section from the last parcel, that's already existing there, as two-way traffic, because that's minimal volume of vehicles, that we say from that point, south to the subdivision is one-way only, and force everybody to go out overall road in some of those areas? I know that's tricky, that's something we haven't done before, but that way it keeps them from going north legally.
Yeah, I think you'd have to involve the highway department.
But I know you wouldn't, I'm just throwing an idea out there.
As far as we're concerned, yes, I mean, I don't.
But I just, I don't know that that would even work. I mean, you're talking about a segmented, where people can't turn left, basically, and go back north and cause a two-way traffic situation. I mean, because what, what I'm concerned about is, we, if this road is, is, is like many others, as we get to the outskirts of development in the county, there's a lot of places that have this similar situation, or we're gonna, we're gonna have this come up in similar areas, but if we have, what's gonna drive the improvements to that infrastructure? Okay, we do have the eight-inch water line, but what would drive the roadway to be widened? Well, it would have to be development, if nothing else, unless it's on the, I can't imagine this road being on the thoroughfare plan, so I don't know what drives it to be improved from a single-lane road to a two-lane, meeting current county standards. How do you get somebody to fund that when the, when, if you only have ten parcels on it now, then really, there wouldn't be anything to drive that? So just trying to come up with some sort of solution that may give us an opportunity to, to keep it safe, I mean, that's the main, the main thing. Right now, it's not conducive to two-way traffic at that, at those numbers headed north from the site, so just trying to think outside the box here a little bit, and it, it may not work at all, so.
Well, I can imagine.
And you can shoot it down, feel free to shoot it down.
People that live just north, just north of the site, that can't, they have to make a, a several-mile loop around, I, I don't see that.
I know, but if, and again, it could, then it would come down to enforcement, just like anything else.
If you keep some, if you say it's one-way only, then it's an enforcement issue, so
I don't know that it's really solving anything, but just trying to think of ideas to help us.
Definitely something we would look at, yeah.
Address the situation, I don't, I don't know. I don't know if it's a good one or not.
Because it's a problem now, yeah, either way, you.
I don't, I don't think that, I'm, I'm like you all from my traffic background, level of service A in a two-way roadway condition, you don't, they don't consider the grass as a, as a wheel path, so, I mean, that's level of service A in that situation for two-way traffic, I, it's, it's marginal at best.
Any other questions for the applicant, any other points to make? Once again, thanks, Jamie. I understand that there's also, could be, several people, maybe even online, that's interested in having a little input, and I'll accept some of those at this time, since the rules have been suspended. Is there anyone here from the community wishing to speak? Anyone? Come forward, please. Name and address.
Darrell Long, fifty-two thirteen Givens Road.
Thank you, Darrell.
Yeah, our big concern is the traffic flow out there. Right now, when we meet a car in two-way traffic, one of us gets off in the ditch, or backs up and pulls in a driveway, there's just not enough room. It's interesting that inside the subdivision, they're requiring, I think, twenty-two-foot-wide pavement, but getting there ten-foot wide's apparently okay, that doesn't make any sense. I agree with Ms. Allen, it's a pig path, we all have large acreage lots out there. We moved out there because it was a pig path, to be honest with you, and we wanted the peaceful rural lifestyle, and last time I checked, a hundred and three or six houses, normally there's married people, so there's two cars, and kids have a car, so you're looking at two hundred and fifty cars, not a hundred. And I would say eighty percent of the people go north to Last Cassis Pike, because that's where they, that's how you get to the interstate. You don't go south to get to the interstate to go work in Nashville, and that's where a lot of people do out there, so that's my two cents worth, it doesn't make sense, and I think it'd be kind of irresponsible to let them put it out there. I, I'm not against development, I don't know why they don't put bigger lots like the surrounding neighborhood, if he wants to develop that, just make it fit in with what's out there.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone online?
Got one coming here.
Sorry.
Ida H. Orey.
Thank you, Jamie.
That school bus, they drops the kids off. He had a wreck down on Plante Hill in two thousand and twelve, two thousand and eleven. Well, he doesn't even travel the whole length of Givens Road anymore. He backs up in a driveway and heads back towards overall, just so he, for the safety of the kids. And that's what my beef about this subdivision is, is for the safety of our kids and the drivers that drive the road. That's all I got.
Thank you, sir. I'll take one or two more. Anyone on Zoom? Okay, we're moving on. The question is, from a preliminary perspective, are we ready to move forward? I think we've heard from the applicant, who's saying that, pretty much, we can't tell them no, because they meet all the requirements. We're hearing from staff, who's saying that, from a broader perspective, it does not meet the requirements, it's up to us to make a decision, and I'll entertain any other questions or motions at this time. Chairman Phillips.
Chair, I have a comment, please.
Jim.
You know, one of the great things, I guess, about doing these things Zoom, was I have access to Google Earth, and can get a better picture of what the area looks like, and kind of close in on things, and taking these measurements, I, I can confirm what Mike is saying. I see a lot of culverts up and down this road that are very narrow, some of those are in curves, and you only have twelve-foot of path there. You can see the tracks on the, tire tracks on the road, and it's, it's certainly a one-car situation, people are driving in the middle of the road, because you have to, that's the only way. There's a lot of driveways in here that are wider than the road. I think, I just think it's gonna be irresponsible to, to put all of these houses on here. You know, I got a lot of respect for Jamie and SCC, they're very, very good at what they do, but something's just not right about the, the level of service report there. I don't know what happened, but it just can't be correct. I just can't support it, and therefore, I'm gonna make a motion to deny.
We have a motion to deny, and a second, Petus Reed. Doug, will you repeat some of the concerns that you had, especially that relate to some of the state-type of requirements that we defer to?
Yes, sir. Right, the, most of the subdivision regulations for counties and municipalities is found in TCA Chapter Thirteen. For us, it's found in, in Chapter Thirteen, Section Three. Our subdivision regulations make specific reference to some of those provisions, notably thirteen dash three dash four oh three, which talks about development, and talks about the conservation and the production of adequate transportation, water, drainage, and sanitary facilities, also for the avoidance of population congestion, and for the avoidance of such scattered or premature subdivision of land, as would involve danger or injury to health, safety, and prosperity. Now, safety and health and those kind of things, that's really, I think, really what we've been talking about mostly today in the regard to this subdivision. Like I said earlier during my comments, when you look up and down Givens Road, predominantly, you're seeing acreage tracks. There are no subdivisions like this in this immediate vicinity. I think the closest one really is around the Lofton Road area, which is a mile or two to the west, as the crow flies, at least. When you look at this area, I would say that the reason you don't see this kind of development here, namely, is because of the road. Most people up and down this road, and the development patterns we've seen up and down Givens Road over the years have historically just been larger acreage tracks, that's what you see here. You just don't see this kind of, of development. And I think, again, part of that reason is just because of the fact that Givens Road, for large portions, is just a one-lane path, when it boils right down to it. So I think this development is not necessarily consistent with the rest of the area around Givens Road that you've seen over in, in past history, as far as the development of, and the subdividing of that property, it's all been larger acreage tracks. So that's been the biggest concern, of course, and there's been a lot of discussion about the traffic study today, as far as, you know, what we felt the adequacy of that study was, again, we think the, very highly of the person who did the study, we just, and I read it with Mike Sid, and the same thing that Lee was saying, is it possible to really have a level of service A along a road that's only one lane, especially if you start adding more and more traffic to this area? There may not be many cars out there right now, but if you keep adding development like this, that's quickly gonna become a larger, a larger issue. So that's some of the, the major concerns that we have as staff, Mike, feel free to chime in with any.
Right, and I, I just want to read again from TCA thirteen dash three dash four oh three. Doug mentioned it, but it said, "And for the avoidance of such scattered or premature subdivisions of land, as would involve danger or injury to health, safety, or prosperity by reasons of lack of water, supply, drainage, transportation, or other public services, or would necess, necess, necessitate, excuse me, an excessive expenditure of public funds for the supply of such, such services, or would be located in an area where there are inadequate or non-existent publicly or privately owned and maintained services and facilities, as Planning Commission has determined, the services are necessary in order for the development to occur." So that's what we're saying, that the infrastructure's just not there.
Thank you. Commissioner Aberwater, Commissioner Reed. Chairman. Wanted to make sure that what we talked about before was repeated, and those are included in your motion and your second. Is that correct?
Absolutely, those are my feelings.
Very good.
Mr. Chairman, may I say something?
Yes.
Referring back to my second, I have been totally schooled by our county attorney sitting over here, that you have to have reasons for some of the things that you do. And as I've sat here and looked at this, and what I've gone on, and I'm familiar with a lot of those roads out there. Some forty-plus years ago, I married into the family of Last Cassis out there, and I've traveled those roads, and I know what they are and what they look like, and I know what those people experience in that area out there, and where some of this is, but what's very interesting about this area out here, just this past week, I'm chairman of public safety on the county commission, and I have met with our public safety director, our fire chief, the county commissioner out that way, and they've been discussing about safety in that area, as far as fires concerned and things of that type. And it's, as I look at this, I have to, as an individual that deals with some of that area right there, and dealing with safety in this county, I just can't see why safety does not figure into this in what we're doing, and that's why, basically, why I'm second this motion. And that's why, basically why I'm second this motion. Because when you look at that, coming from that north, trying even to get into this development right here, a, a fire engine would probably would have to come from the south to get to it, to be safe for the personnel on those engines and things. Do be the fact that they would know that probably this road is not wide enough, that if they got there, they'd have to meet somebody, would slow their response time. So they would, that would probably figure into it, too. So the reason I second this would be based on the fact of the safety of those who would live within this subdivision, as well as those within that area traveling that way. So I think that figures within our decision, too.
Very good. We have a motion and a second to deny item number 21-4003 for, I'm sorry, 21, 20-1011 for Hudson Metals. Uh, and that motion and second includes all of staff comments.
Mr. Chairman, this is Commissioner Allen. Can I say something?
Yes, Rhonda.
Thank you. Um, you know, we spent a lot of time talking about the road, and I think we spent our time on that because it's the most obvious reason to not approve this. Um, and I know you incorporated staff comments into the motion, but I just want to make sure that it's very clear and that we're on record that, you know, as a community, we have identified that we do not want scattered and premature development in the rural community. And so I want to make sure that, I feel like this development is the very definition of scattered and premature. Um, I was trying to put my hands on the zoning ordinance, but instead I pulled up the, um, this is one of the advantages of zoning from home, is you have documentation at your fingertips. I found our comprehensive plan, and under transportation, um, there's a couple of points I just think need to be right into the comments, and that is, funding of transportation improvements or enhancements should be well timed with right-of-way needs. Limit of development along roads with an inadequate level of service until funds or improvements, um, to roads are in place. So, this is our own guidance, our own vision for this community is telling us, we have to time these things appropriately. And so, um, premature, like I said, is, is my definition of this development. So I just want to make sure that that's very clear and on the record.
Me, too, Rhonda. Thank you. Other questions or comments? Once again, the motion is to deny. Call or roll, Gal.
Charlotte P. Vivian Craig Lynch. David Jones.
Yes.
Jim Everwater.
Yes.
Lee Bogle. Marvin Whitworth.
Yes.
Mike Kush.
Yep.
Pettis Reed.
Yes.
Rhonda Allen.
Yes.
Jeff Phillips.
Yes.
Motion carries.
An animus denial. Item 6B2, the item number is 21-1002, East Fork Landing. 136 lots on 88-plus acres, zoned RM, located along Betty Ford Road. Blue Point Group Partnership is the applicant's. Tax map is 60. Doug?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Uh, this property is located along the east side of Betty Ford Road. This is south of Jefferson Pike. All lots in this development will be a minimum of 15,000 square feet, and it is proposed to be served by sanitary disposal through a step system. Okay, I'm sorry, there's a typo on the staff comments. I apologize for that. The property does extend to the north to East Jefferson Pike, but there's no access proposed to that road. Uh, most of our comments have been addressed. Uh, there are a few outstanding comments, really just more minor and things that we could probably handle at the construction, uh, plan stage, should just be approved. But beyond that, Mike, unless there's anything beyond what I'm talking about, then this appears to be in good order. So I'd be happy to answer any questions.
We have a motion to approve. Look at it before we move on.
Mike and Doug, you're okay with everything?
Mike, would you second the motion before we ask questions?
Charlotte did.
I'm sorry. Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Now, Mike, I'm sorry.
That's right.
You're comfortable?
Yes, sir. They, they've got, added a second entrance. Um, they've done everything they've, we've asked them to do. Um, I'll show you on the map. Uh, it's these two parcels here. There's a lot of wetlands up front, uh, along East Jefferson Pike. That's, uh, that won't be developed. Their step system will be in this area, uh, this northern area here. We had looked at maybe potentially putting a stub street to this large parcel, uh, right here in the corner of Betty Ford and East Jefferson. But unfortunately, there's a stream and a cemetery right where, um, if the road were to extend, it would have to jog around that, and we thought that'd be too difficult. So, um, they've, they've laid it out and, and, uh, incorporated all our suggestions.
What, what about the, the bend in the river and those lots down there? Are those critical?
That, it is some FEMA, uh, but those are going to be large lots. Uh, let's see, what, they're going to be large, deep lots, and the building envelopes will be farther away from the river. It's kind of a bluff right there.
Okay. So they're, they're not defined as a critical lot and will need a lot of fill or anything like that?
No, sir.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Other questions? We have a motion and a second to approve item 21-1002 for East Fork Landing Preliminary Plan. Other questions or comments? Call or roll, please, Gal.
Charlotte P. Craig Lynch.
Yes.
David Jones.
Yes.
Jim Everwater.
Yes.
Lee Bogle. Marvin Whitworth.
Yes.
Mike Kush.
Yes.
Pettis Reed.
Yes.
Rhonda Allen.
Yes.
Jeff Phillips.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item 6C, these are items submitted for final plat approval. 6C1, I'm sorry, 6C1 has been withdrawn. 6C2, 21-2016, Walnut Grove, Section 1. 32 lots on 22.99 acres. That's pretty close to 23 acres. Zoned RM, located along Walnut Grove Road. That's SR 269. Walnut Grove Farms is the applicant. Doug?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Now, the preliminary plan for this development was approved by the Planning Commission back in August of 2019. Uh, they've been, uh, in, constructing since that point. Uh, this final plat does appear to be consistent with that preliminary approval. Uh, we did have several comments on this particular plat. Uh, those comments have been addressed. We feel this plat is in good order, so we'd recommend approval, and be happy to answer any questions.
I'll make a motion to approve subject to all staff comments.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve 21-2016, Walnut Grove, Section 1. Any other questions or comments? Call or roll, please, Gal.
Charlotte P. Craig Lynch.
Yes.
David Jones.
Yes.
Jim Everwater.
Yes.
Lee Bogle. Marvin Whitworth.
Yes.
Mike Kush.
Yes.
Pettis Reed.
Yes.
Rhonda Allen.
Yes.
Jeff Phillips.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item 6C3, 21-2017, Final Plat for South Haven, Section 12. 39 lots on 8-plus acres, zoned PUD, located off Ocala Road. South Haven Development Group is the applicant. It's tax map 77. Doug?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Uh, the plan for preliminary plan, excuse me, for this development was approved by the Planning Commission back in September of 2015. Uh, of course, this has been a subdivision that's been under development for quite some time. We've seen several sections of this in the past. As you can see, this is Section 12. Uh, our comments that we have pretty much have been addressed. Uh, really, I think there's maybe one little tweak they need to make, adding some symbology to the legend for the center line. But beside that's nothing that we would want to hold up anything on. But besides that, uh, this plat appears to be in good order. So we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Doug, general question. Approximately, what is the total build-out up to date on West Haven, or South Haven, I'm sorry?
As far as how many lots they've currently done?
Well, or sections, yeah.
Yeah, well, this is the highest section that we've seen a final plat for. Do we have some construction drawings for 13?
Yes.
Okay, so we've seen construction drawings for the next section. Uh, I don't know exactly how many sections they have total, uh, but the total build-out as far as the number of homes.
Four more.
Three or four, okay. So the, the total was going to be about 514?
Not a lot.
Yet.
14 sections.
14 sections. So we still got a couple of sections left, but they're getting, they're getting toward the, the back end of it.
Thank you.
And it, um, if I could zoom there real quick, they will have a second connection, or another connection to the Stewart's Creek Development to the north. So we'll have two connections on Ocala and another connection to Stewart's Creek to the north, which goes up to Burntob Road.
And as you recall, that was actually part of the plan development when they lined all that up. We asked them to provide that, so that's, it's been a long time coming, but they're finally making it to the other side of the Colonial Gas Line.
Yeah, and they're moving along.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve subject to all staff comments.
Thank you, Jim.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve item 21-2017, South Haven, Section 12, Final Plat. Other questions or comments? Call or roll, please, Gal.
Charlotte P. Craig Lynch. David Jones.
Yes.
Jim Everwater.
Yes.
Lee Bogle. Marvin Whitworth.
Yes.
Mike Kush.
Yes.
Pettis Reed.
Yes.
Rhonda Allen.
Yes.
Jeff Phillips.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item 6C4, 21-2018, The Preserve at South Haven, Section 2. 34 lots on 18-plus acres, zoned RM, located off Ocala Road. Regent Homes is the applicant. Tax map is 94. Doug?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Uh, this preliminary plan and this particular development is immediately adjacent to the east, to the South Haven development. Now, this was not part of the South Haven PUD. It's a separate, uh, conventionally RM-zoned property. But the plan for this development was approved by the Planning Commission back in March of 2017. Excuse me. This plat does appear to be consistent with the preliminary approval. Most of our comments have been addressed. Really, the only thing that they need to do before, uh, recording is, uh, there's a geotech note regarding the, the lots uh, that have the two or more feet of fill on the lots. There's a note on page 2, but not on page 1. It needs to be added to page 1 of the plat, also to make sure that the lots and the double asterisks all match up.
The numbering matches the note.
So, yeah, so beyond that, I mean, of course, that's something we can handle before, uh, actually recording the plat. So beyond that, this plat appears to be in good order.
Make motion to approve.
Thank you, Greg. Motion and a second. Those motions include staff comments. Very good. Any other questions or comments? We have a motion and a second to approve item 21-2018, The Preserve at South Haven, Section 2. Call or roll, please, Gal.
Charlotte P. Craig Lynch. David Jones.
Yes.
Jim Everwater.
Yes.
Lee Bogle. Marvin Whitworth.
Yes.
Mike Kush.
Yes.
Pettis Reed.
Yes.
Rhonda Allen.
Yes.
Jeff Phillips.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item 6D, these are items submitted for site plan approval. I think we have three items today. 6D1, item number is 18-3012, Sulfur Springs Market. Construction of 4,500 square feet of convenience store and leasable area of 5,184. Fueling canopy area located, I'm sorry, zone CS located off Sulfur Springs Road. Tri-State Petroleum is the applicant. Doug?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Uh, this site plan was initially approved by the Planning Commission back in September of 2018. It was back, it was, excuse me, brought back before the Planning Commission in November of last year because the approval for it had expired. Uh, during that meeting, the plan was deferred due to questions about the proposed improvements to Sulfur Springs Road and how those improvements would affect this site, and also the Primetime C Store, which is actually next on the agenda. Uh, the applicant's design engineer has submitted plans for those improvements, and we have reviewed those. The site plan in and of itself, as far as Sulfur Springs Road market is concerned, uh, appears to be in good order. Uh, there's one detail that is a little difficult to read, and that's the handicap ramp detail. They'll just need to make sure that, uh, that detail is such that we can, that we can look at that. Uh, beyond that, the road improvements that have been submitted, of course, both this and the Primetime C Store are going to be responsible for their portions of this. I mean, that's something that we can work out as we, uh, progress with site plan approval, but those are improvements that we do want to see. Uh, but beyond that, like I said, this plan does appear to be in good order, and I'll be happy to answer any questions, as will Mike, if you have any.
Those road improvements, Doug, are, um, uh, the approval is contingent upon those meeting your, our standards according to staff?
There is a separate plan to widen Sulfur Springs Road to three lanes, and that's what we're evaluating. They're transitioning from a, uh, two-lane ditch section to a three-lane curb and gutter, and we're going to make sure all the drainage works and the, the tieback, uh, all work.
So, an approval would be contingent upon those conditions being met?
Yes.
Very good. Okay, questions for staff?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I move for the approval upon the conditions that have been mentioned.
Thank you, Pettis.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve item 18-3012, uh, Site Plan for Sulfur Springs Market. Other questions or comments? Call or roll, please, Gal.
Charlotte P. Craig Lynch. David Jones.
Yes.
Jim Everwater.
Yes.
Lee Bogle. Marvin Whitworth.
Yes.
Mike Kush.
Yes.
Pettis Reed.
Yes.
Rhonda Allen.
Yes.
Jeff Phillips.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Gal. Item 6D2, 20-3034, Site Plan for Primetime C Store. Construction of 3,789 square feet, Convenience Store on, with a 3,264 square foot fueling canopy area on 3.65 acres, zoned CS, located off Sulfur Springs Road. Chad Conda Chonhury, I'm sorry about that, is the applicant.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Uh, as stated just a moment ago, this was the plan that I was referring to. This was also on the November 9th, 2020 agenda, which was deferred. Uh, the applicant's proposing to construct a gas station, convenience market also on this property. Uh, this market will primarily focus on private passenger vehicles, but you can see on the site plan that they do have a couple of spots for 18-wheel trucks. Uh, staff's, one of staff's concerns about this is I didn't want to see this becoming a truck stop. I guess truck stops are classified differently in our zoning ordinance and are not allowed into commercial services zone. I have received information from the applicant on this. Uh, they're not going to be providing any kind of facilities as far as like lockers, uh, restroom, or shower facilities, I should say, uh, those kind of things. This won't necessarily be a, an area that, you know, when you see truck stops, you see large amounts of parking. You see large amounts of, uh, of, you know, trucks that can come in and have facilities for those type of things. You're not going to see that here. So, uh, I just wanted to make sure that we were all clear on, on that. Uh, there is a fueling area that you do see for diesel fuel. That is going to be for private passenger vehicles, not just for 18-wheelers, but I did want to make that clear to you. There's also a large TVA easement on this property. It bisects the property going from the southwest to the northeast. Parking maneuvering areas are allowed under that easement or in the easement, but permit structures are not. Uh, there's also some area on the front of the property where that frontage road, K, in, in that area is, that there's some potential for, um, possible right-of-way dedication back to the applicant right of way that the county's not using anymore. That's something that the applicant will need to coordinate with the county, uh, road board through the county highway department, just to, yeah, that area right there that Mike is highlighting on the plan. Uh, from that standpoint, most of planning's comments have been addressed and the concerns that we have. Now, I know that there are still some outstanding engineering issues with this. I'll let Mike discuss those in a little more detail.
Because this is so close to the Sulfur Springs 840 interchange, this area in front is a Controlled Access Zone. They do show a little stretch of fence, but the Controlled Access Zone, I believe, heads a little bit farther north, right before you get to Frontage Road J. So, we just need to get that coordinated with the state. Let's see. They will have to work with building codes about showing all the ingress egress points into the building. Right now, they're only showing one entrance at the front of the building. Typically, you'll need more than just one entrance, so we'll need to make sure that that's addressed with their building plans. Like I said earlier, we are reviewing the widening of Sulfur Springs Road, so there might be some calculations, corrections, excuse me, that we'll need to go along with that. And just some minor things that need to be addressed on the grading plan. The emergencies, like I said, sorry, these are just minor things, but the emergency spillway is an armored way to allow larger flows to go through the berm of the pond. They're not showing any armoring, you know, riprap, erosion, matting, or anything like that. We need to have them adjust the elevations on the top of the pond. And like I said, these are just mainly minor things that we can work out, but nothing really that jumps out. And, oh, well, there is one, one section that we need to address. And I'll go back to the grading. They are calling for, if you can kind of see, there's a curb inlet that they're proposing right here where a lot of the site drains to, and then it goes to the pond, but there is no, no pipe or headwall or anything that leads to this swell. So, we're kind of scratching our head, how is the water going to get in this inlet and then get into the pond? We need to see that, a little more of that detail for that work. But that's, that's something minor that can be addressed easily enough. That's all I had. Chairman?
Staff is recommending approval with comments?
Subject to all those comments, yes, sir.
Is there, is there a turn lane or a, coming off of Sulfur Springs into that project?
There will be with the widening plan of Sulfur Springs. Right now, let me show you. Let me get there.
Because I ask because I travel that road quite a bit, and people build up a fair amount of speed coming either off the interstate or through Sulfur Springs from the interstate. And if you're, if you're coming off and then immediately trying to turn in, I see that as a nice rear-end collision opportunity.
They are proposing, let's go back up to the site plan. I think it shows a little bit better. So, they are proposing a dedicated right-turn lane into the site to allow truck traffic to get off the through lane. There will be a through lane, and this doesn't show it, but we're going to ask for a right-turn lane for the existing Timberlake Drive. So, there'll be a through, dedicated left, dedicated right.
But is that only going to come into play when Sulfur Springs is widened, or is that coming into play now?
This, this site is subject to the road widening plans like the Sulfur Springs Market, and it's, it's just, the Sulfur Springs Market is just down the street from it. And if y'all recall, there was another planned market at this site, at this kind of intermediate site. So, this is the Sulfur Springs Market here in yellow. The primetime C-Store is this site here, and then there was another site here. So, they're going to look at widening all the way, almost to this three-way intersection, all the way back to the interchange. So, we're going to need coordination with state, because a lot of this, where you can see this wide interchange, that's part of their Controlled Access Zone. So, that's where we need coordination of what we can do inside that zone.
Will you refresh mine and everybody's memory on a timeframe for that Sulfur Springs widening?
It, we have to approve the plans, and then they have to go to the state, because it impacts theirs. It could be six months, eight months, you know.
And just so we're clear, this isn't the five-lane widening of the entire road that's on our major thoroughfare plan. You could just, I just want to make sure there's no confusion out there that, oh, it's going to be, the whole stretch is going to be widened. The reason we're asking for this is just because of the development of these tracks right in this area. So, so there's a future project to widen it to five lanes along that whole stretch, but this is just really more to deal with these local developments that we've, that we've seen.
So, would this be a county project or a DOT county project?
It'd be really more developer-driven.
Be developer-driven with coordination with the county and the state.
Okay, thank you.
To a three-lane section, basically a two-way left-turn lane connecting those.
Yes, yes. It'll be a continuous left-turn center lane from Frontage Road J, almost to the three-way stop.
Was there a mini-storage there as well?
A little bit farther to the east, around the corner, behind the Dollar General.
On the other side of, right. Which is actually accessed off of Leanna Central Valley Road.
It's back here, yeah.
Yeah, we just saw that site plan for Phase 2 like a month or two ago. Actually, I think it was just last month when I think about it.
Spoiler alert, the Highway Department is looking and making improvements at that three-way intersection. We haven't come up with a plan yet, but we're, we're looking to make some improvements.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve subject to staff comments.
Thank you, Jim. We have a motion and a second to approve item 2-0-3-0-3-4, Site Plan for Primetime C-Store. Other questions? Call or roll, please, Gal.
Charlotte P., Craig Lynch, David Jones, Jim Aberwater, Lee Bogle, Marvin Whitworth, Mike Kush, Pettis Reed, Rhonda Allen, Jeff Phillips. Yes. Motion carries.
Thank you. Item 6D-3-2-1-3-0-0-6, Shelbyville Pike Dealership. Construction of 21,700 square feet of sales, office, and shop space for a car dealership, Zoned CG, located at 4372 Shelbyville Pike. Al Zebbit Nasser Fawas is the applicant. The tax map is 149. Doug?
Yes, sir. Thank you. This is our final plan we have for consideration today. This property was rezoned commercial general by the Board of Commissioners back in December of last year. This site plan is for that contemplated use, which is a motor vehicle sales establishment. The existing office building toward the front of the property will remain. Two additional buildings are being proposed, one for detailing and one for vehicle repair, primarily as the applicant had stated to us at the public hearings, for his own vehicles, not necessarily for an open-body shop. We did send our comments to the applicant's design engineer. Those comments, it looks like for the most part, have been addressed. There does need to be a coordination with building codes regarding the ADA accessible route on the plan, just to make sure. They are showing it on the plan. We just need to make sure with building codes that that is per their development codes. But beyond that, this site plan does appear to be in good order, and so we'd recommend approval. And obviously, we'd be happy to answer any questions as always.
Doug, I'm going to make kind of a question and a comment. On a recent morning trip down 231 coming from Shelbyville, there were several businesses along there that are auto-related, whether they be dealerships or car repair facilities. And at one of them, the car dealership, there was a car hauler out in the, on the right-of-way, I guess you would say, on the side of the road. They're unloading cars, and I know that's something we're trying to get away with from. And another one, I think was a combination car dealership and mechanic shop. And apparently, he has his customers in the morning leave their cars outside the gate, perhaps on their way to work and before he's open. And as a result, there were a number of cars parked along the side of the road there, waiting for him to get in, open the gate, I suppose. And I look at these and say, both of these are potentially dangerous situations. We've had this conversation in the past about prohibiting the unloading and storage of vehicles inside the state right-of-way. I don't know if there's any way to put any teeth in it. Perhaps there's a way, you know, if we even up the standards for these trucks. I'm looking at your truck turnaround, your truck access plan. You've got a truck turn plan in there. It requires some three-point turns, you know, with trailers and that sort of thing. And, you know, these car haulers are pretty long, and if they can unload on the side of the road, which they're really more accustomed to doing wherever they deliver, they're certainly not going to want to do these three-point turns and that sort of thing. I'm just wondering, are we just about to make it so easy that even, even a stupid driver can maneuver through something? And I don't know what to do about these ones that are in the past, but I see this as a developing problem as we get more of these cars, small car dealerships. I don't know. Do you have any comments on that or anything that we can do on these? Or do you think we're doing enough?
Well, without knowing which ones you're talking about, obviously, it's difficult. Like you said, some of these may have been approved in the past where the sites were developed in such a way where it doesn't lend itself well to a car hauler, car hauler, excuse me, getting off the right-of-way, you know, offline. If you could let me know, we can, we can look into those. As far as the one we have before us today, just looking at the truck-turning template, I mean, there may be ways they could tweak that where, rather than having to do a three-point turn right there, if they could somehow loop around the bottom right there. I know there may, they may be able to tweak the truck-turning template to make sure that they don't have to, they can pull it on-site, unload their inventory right there, and then he can just kind of complete the loop and go about his merry way, leaving the site, which is, again, right in, right out. You know, if you'd like to make any kind of approval subject to us verifying that that can be done on this site, I don't think that's unreasonable at all, and I think that would be something that probably could be easily tweaked as far as that goes.
Do we know if it's unlawful to unload on the right-of-way?
In the state right-of-way?
Yeah.
I'm, I don't have an answer to that question. I know it's not something we like to see, especially when, you know, what Mr. Aberwater was talking about as far as, you know, vehicles just being parked there and then until the guy decides to open his gate, and then they bring them all in. I can't imagine they'd be real happy about that.
Yeah, but I mean, I mean like a hauler, a tractor-trailer with, you know, 12 new cars on it.
Right, and that, I don't have an answer to that. I mean, that's something I'm sure we could find out pretty easily. Lee, do you have any idea? Okay.
I think we did ask the applicant about the size of the car hauler, and I think he said that they're not going to use the large semi-ones. It's going to be a smaller one that just, you know, with the trailer carries two, two cars, three cars, something like that.
And if I remember, I believe Mike's right on this one, because I remember that coming up on this at the public hearing, how did he mention that? But now that being said, could we stop an 18-wheeler from accessing the site? I mean, obviously, we're not going to be out there, we're not going to know about it. But I do think that just tweaking that to make sure, that template to make sure that that hauler can actually get around that area right there where he's got inventory. I mean, it seems like there's a good amount of space right through there.
Jamie, did I see you shake your head about the smaller? Thank you.
And like I said, before permits are issued, we could make sure that that's been addressed to our satisfaction, because I think one of those is a car hauler, and the other one's for a fire truck, because he did two separate ones.
I would like to review the three-point or other type of turnaround possibilities, because I know before Craig left, Craig left me a little note, which really came in line with Jim Aberwater's comment, was we do not want to put tractor-trailers with large vehicles, new or used, in a right-of-way unloading position. That may not be applicable for this particular applicant, but going forward, we want to be cognizant of that. So, motion to approve.
Second motion.
Thank you, David. We have a motion and a second to approve with staff comments. Item number 2-1-3-0-0-6, Shelbyville Pike Dealership. Other questions or comments? Call or roll, please, Gal.
Charlotte P., David Jones, Jim Aberwater, Lee Bogle, Marvin Whitworth, Mike Kush, Pettis Reed, Rhonda Allen, Jeff Phillips. Yes. Motion carries.
Very good. Thank you. Other business?
No, sir. We don't have any updates right now, other than to say that staff is working on several things that will be bringing to your attention in the very near future, hopefully next month, so just to kind of be on alert for that.
Very good. Thank you. Our next meeting is scheduled for Monday, April the 12, and that'll be a 6:00 PM meeting with public hearings here in this courthouse. The chair would like to thank you for your patience and your attendance today and your participation in seeing what is in the best interest of the county and the citizens of Rutherford County. Thank you. We are adjourned.